Okay, we're ready.
Great. If I could get everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alrighty, thank you all. Welcome everyone to our June 8, 2020 Board Reorganizational Meeting and Work Session tonight. We'll go ahead and get, jump right into it here. We will call this meeting to order. Routine matters first up. We do have a couple of changes to the agenda tonight, and I'll need a motion to amend the agenda. To add the SSD. So if someone would like to make a motion, please.
Move.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the voting of the SSD Board Delegate.
Thank you. Second, I have a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We will, the, thank you, and that approves our agenda for tonight, June 8, 2020. Next up is our 3.01, Reorganization of the Board. I'd like to start out, you know, normally, when we're together and we're not in COVID, we get to sort of, to really appreciate people who are leaving the board and people are coming on to the board. So first, let me welcome our current board members as Chad Kavanaugh and Jennifer Pangborn, but also welcome Nicole Schern to our board tonight. And I'd be remiss if we didn't take time out to recognize and thank Julie Backer for her work and her years or time on this board. She's done a lot, you know, for the kids in the district, and I just want to make sure we take the time out to thank her for every, all of her hard work and dedication. With that, we will move on over to our 3.01, which is receive the vote from Board of Election Commissioners for the school election that was held June 2, 2020.
Okay, so we have not received the official report yet from the Board of Elections because it is a little bit early. But we are going to move forward based on the votes that were provided to the public.
Alright, nice. We will move on then to 3.02, to declare the board members as elected. So for this point, do we, we want to go ahead and make our motion to change, because we have a board member that is our Acting Secretary that will need to take care of that. So Jean Marie, if you'd like.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to have the Board President serve as Secretary to swear in the new board members.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. I will take over as Secretary for this part of the meeting. And next up, we will go through here. Let me pull up my notes here for our swearing in. Okay, so first off, we'll need a motion to declare the new board members as elected, and that will be declaring Jennifer Pangborn, Chad Kavanaugh, and Nicole Schern as being elected. So we need a motion for that. I think I heard a motion, but I can't, I didn't see who it was.
You need a motion to swear in the board members, is what you're asking?
To declare the board members elected, receive, yeah, declare, the motion to declare board members elected is the first step.
Okay, I make a motion to declare board members elected.
And we need a second.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, second, to declare Jennifer Pangborn, Chad Kavanaugh, and Nicole Schern as elected board members. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Now, the directors will be sworn in by the Board Secretary, which is me. So if I can have Jennifer Pangborn, Chad Kavanaugh, and Nicole Schern, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the duties of School Director
Discharge the duties of School Director.
In and for the District of Kirkwood R7, St. Louis County.
In and for the District of Kirkwood R7.
R7, St. Louis County.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
Missouri.
To the best of my ability, according to the law.
To the best of my ability, according to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. You are now sworn in by the board. I welcome you all. Thank you for, for, I know it was a hard campaign. It's a different time, as we had the campaign a little differently, but I know you guys did a great job, and we're, we're excited. We're excited to have this board. We're excited to have you guys and what you bring to it. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, with that, we will, I think we moved, we moved to election of officers.
Right, so our script says adjourn CNA DA.
Oh, we need a motion for that.
Correct.
So moved. Sure.
Alright, any, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Alrighty, by that, we are adjointing the, thank, thank you, Michelle. I missed that part. And next up will be our election of officers, and the superintendent will take over this point.
Thank you. So at this point, I will be leading the election of the President and the Vice President. So the first election this evening will be for the Office of President of the Board of Education. Nominations are now open for the President.
For President of the Board, I nominate Chad Kavanaugh.
I second.
Alright, are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Okay, so hearing no other nominations, nominations are closed. We will now proceed to the election for the candidate of President. Chad Kavanaugh is President of the Board of Education, and this election will be held through roll call. Ms. Andrews?
I.
No.
Yes.
Ms. Bernardi?
Yes.
Mr. Boyko?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Pangborn?
Yes.
And Ms. Schern?
Yes.
Alright, so at a vote of seven yes votes, there were seven votes in favor of Mr. Kavanaugh, zero votes were opposed, and there were no abstentions. And so Mr. Kavanaugh has received the majority of the votes as elected President of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
So the next election this evening will be for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Nominations are now open for the Vice President.
So I nominate Jean Marie Andrews.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, Jean Marie Andrews is nominated for the Office of Vice President. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations are now closed and will proceed to the election. The candidate for the Vice Presidency are Jean Marie Andrews. The election will be conducted by roll call. Please say yes or no. Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Bernardi?
Yes.
Mr. Boyko?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Pangborn?
Yes.
And Ms. Schern?
Yes.
Alright, so the results of the vote are seven votes in favor of Jean Marie Andrews as a Vice President of the Board of Education. There were zero votes opposed, and there were zero abstentions. So since she has received the majority of the votes, Jean Marie Andrews is declared Vice President of the Board of Education. Congratulations. At this time, I now relinquish the chair to our newly elected President of the Board of Education, Chad Kavanaugh.
Alright, thank you, Michelle. Alright, we will begin nominations for the role of Secretary, so I open up the floor.
I nominate Mark Boyko.
I need a second?
Second.
Alright, we will do a roll call. Start with Jean Marie Andrews.
Yes.
Jennifer Pangborn?
Yes.
Alright, Angie Bernardi?
Yes.
Mark Boyko?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes.
Okay, so by unanimous decision, congratulations, Mark Boyko. You are the Acting Secretary for the School Board. Congratulations.
Congrats.
Alright, we now will appoint MSBA Delegate, and I am opening the floor for nominations for MSBA Delegate.
I nominate Jennifer Pangborn.
Great. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We will go roll call. Nicole, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mark Boyko?
Yes.
Jean Marie?
Yes.
Jennifer Pangborn?
Yes.
Alright, congratulations. Jennifer, you are the MSBA Delegate. Alright. We now will appoint the Special School District Delegate from the Kirkwood School District, opening that up for nominations.
Mr. Kavanaugh, do we want to vote on the alternate or no?
I was gonna come back to it.
Okay, you're good, you're good.
Yeah. It's fine.
I nominate Darnell Frost.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
Alright, we will do a roll call. Jean Marie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Darnell?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Angie?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Darnell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we now will go to the role of MSBA Alternate Delegate. I will ask for nominations now. Nominations for alternate MSBA Delegate.
I nominate Angie Bernardi.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
Alright, we will do a roll call. Jennifer?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Darnell?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Jean Marie?
Yes.
And Mark Boyko?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Congratulations, Angie. And now we will do the alternate to the Special School District Delegate from Kirkwood School District. Floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Nicole Schern.
Okay.
Second?
Alright, thank you. We will do a roll call. Beginning, Jean Marie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Angie?
Yes.
Alright, congratulations. Thank you, Nicole. Alright, I saw you, I can't hear you, but I saw you. Alright, that will end that agenda item of election of officers. Congratulations to everybody.
Hey Chad?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you guys. Darnell, can we go back to the very beginning and get a motion and a second to accept the result, the preliminary results of the votes for the district?
Yes.
Board members, thank you.
We need to do that.
I move to accept the preliminary results.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you all.
Okay. We will move on to 4.01, Election of Treasurer. Darnell, are you sure? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, it's all you, buddy.
No, I'm sorry. I heard some reverb, so I think you're sharing your screen. So I just want to click down to Election of Treasurer, or somebody sharing the agenda. There we go. Okay, so Mike Romay, do you have anything to say here?
No, I don't.
Okay, alright. I need, I need a motion to elect Mike Romay as a Treasurer for the 2020-21 school year.
Make your motion.
Alright, I need a second? Okay. And all those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Alright, so be it. Mike Romay, congratulations. You are now the re-elected Treasurer of the Kirkwood School District.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to 4.02, Appointment of Legal Firm. So I need a motion to appoint the legal firm for the district. I need the official name. I can't see it on the screen, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second.
McCarthy Leonard and Kemmerer L.C.
Alright, there it is, it's at the bottom here. So again, I needed a motion to appoint McCarthy Leonard and Kemmerer L.C. as our legal firm for the district.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I mean, I guess my only comment was, I think it was a year ago, at my swearing in, there was some just discussion about how long it'd been since we did an RFP. I didn't know if anyone had a answer for that. And if not, it's something that we should probably, you know, look at over the next, next year.
Okay.
I don't recall doing an RFP in a number of years, probably as long as I've been here. Nineteen years.
Okay. Obviously, something we can consider for the future, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, any other comments or questions? Okay, we, we have a motion and a second. All those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to 4.03, Copy to Readapt the Conflict of Interest Policy. Alright. Michelle or Mike, any, any comments here? Anything that you want to talk about or say?
No, this is a vote that the board takes every year. It's Policy BBFA. I think it's on display right now on everybody's board. If you could take a look at it, become familiar with it, it's one that we approve every year. It's a conflict of interest policy regarding board members serving on the Board of Education.
Okay, I need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, without hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those who approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those disapprove, say nay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to 4.04, Approval to Seek Bids for the District Boiler Replacement Project. Mike Romay?
Yes, thank you. I'm asking permission to get bids for new boilers at North Kirkwood Middle School, Kaiser Elementary, North Clendale, Robinson, and Tillman Elementarys. Boilers are primary heating source for buildings. They average about thirty-three years old, and we've had a lot of problems with them, parts that are just failing each and every year. The new boilers, if approved, that we would purchase would be more efficient, which will save us energy. I'm recommending Approval to Seek Bids, and if approved, we'll bring back the bids in July for the board to approve and to consider and approve. At that time, I will also be bringing a recommending, a recommendation for a lease purchase financing for these boilers.
Okay. I need a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Alright, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dee.
I have a question for Mr. Romay. Just wanted to ask you, I think we've gotten some quotes on boilers as a package before in an energy savings proposal, and I noticed that an energy analysis will also be conducted with this RFP as a part of the RFP. So what about the previous bids that you've received, and will you compare these bids to those? Will you report back? Or what has been done with that energy analysis?
Yes, we, well, we have a bid from Siemens, and we also have a, an estimate from a boiler manufacturer. So we have those, but the estimate that we have from the manufacturer is not an actual bid. So we will get actual bids, we'll put it out to bid the way we normally do, where we advertise for them, and and we also seek bids from companies that we know can provide these, this equipment and these services. But we will also ask the engineer that will be designing the specifications to give us the potential energy savings that these new boilers would generate. So that information will be giving, given to the board in July when we recommend the purchase.
So you still have the previous information and bids and energy savings as well from Siemens, so you'll compare them?
Yeah, we have it from Siemens. What we have from another company is, is just an estimate for these boilers. So it's not an actual bid.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, this is an action item. All those who approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any nays? Alright, so approved. Thank you, Mr. Romay.
Thank you.
Alright. With that, that is our agenda for the special meeting. I need a motion to adjourn, and then we will go straight into our workshop.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Need a second? Okay, all those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned from our special session, and we will go into our workshop. Mike, you want to take over?
Yes, let me, I'm gonna try to share my screen, and hopefully that goes well. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Hold on for just one second. Okay, can you still see it?
Yes.
Alright, great. So tonight, what I'm gonna present is a preliminary budget, and then on June 22, during the board meeting, that's when the board will adopt, I'll present a final budget, and the board will need to adopt a final budget for next year. So tonight, it's preliminary. The things we're gonna talk about first will be enrollment projections, and then I'll discuss each fund. So these are the different funds that the school district has. We'll also talk about the potential revenue impact that we're expecting from state funding cuts. And then I would also like to discuss prepaying some of our existing debt from our debt service fund. Before I go there, I'd just like to say a few things about Prop S. I'd like to thank everybody for their, all their time and help with trying to pass Prop S. It was a tremendous effort. So thanks to Ginger and to our YES Committee for all of their time and efforts. Our enrollment growth and overcrowding that, and the need for our facilities, that has not gone away, and we still need to address our overcrowding in our schools, along with safety and accessibility improvements throughout the district. So we still have a lot of work to do. We'll need to regroup and reengage our community and determine our next steps. I'd also like to thank our Budget and Finance Committee. This is a citizen-led advisory to the Board of Education. They help us each year develop our budget. They provide guidance. They look at financial performance, projections, sustainability, and they also provide a community perspective when determining our financial planning for the school district. I'd also like to thank Shannon Orlop and Scott Harmon for all their help with developing the budget. So first, I'd like to, let me go back. I'd like to discuss our enrollment growth, and hold on for just one second. So to the left of the screen, you see our official enrollment dating back to 2010-11. So since 2010-11, we have grown 756 students. That's a fifteen percent increase during that timeframe. And our enrollment is projected to continue to increase. And so the projections are on the right-hand side, and they go out through 24-25. You'll notice that overall enrollment is projected to increase. Our non-resident enrollment, and that's mainly students through the BIC program, is expected to decrease as those students graduate to high school. So enrollment is really important because it has a direct impact on our operating budget and also our space needs.
I've got a question about that, Mike.
Yeah.
What's kind of a productive timeline to get an update? I know at one point, that was, the last year was presented as sort of partial data. I don't know at what point it'd be helpful to, you know, as we understand kind of what our prudent next steps are.
Yep. I was just gonna mention that. We just got word that the 2019 live birth data is available, so I will be filling out all the paperwork this week to get that information. I talked to Dr. Coferin about updating our enrollment study, so assuming that the board is okay with that, then we will update our enrollment study soon with, as soon as we have that information. It'll probably take, by the time the paperwork gets submitted and approved, that'll take a few weeks, and then it'll probably take a few weeks for Dr. Coferin to do his work, so it would probably be the end of July before we would have that information.
Okay, and then does that require a board vote, or do you intend to come to the board, or we just do it?
No, no, the, it doesn't require a board vote. The amount of money that we pay is, is not very much, so it doesn't require a board vote.
Yes, I think every year, Dr. Coferin does that update for us. It's less than the amount that the board would have to approve. So I think it's less than $5,000. But I also have another question, Mr. Romay. As far as our projected enrollment, I know this year, we're projecting an increase of 130 students for next year, for 2021. And then do you have the current numbers and how they compare to that? Because I know that's so important to your budget when you're assigning the additional Because I know that's so important to your budget when you're assigning the additional teachers.
Yep, we do have that information. I don't know if Dr. Bailey is on and can, can answer that. I know that we're still enrolling students, so, so it's, we're below that number right now, but we're also a few months before the start of school. So we, we continue to enroll new students each and every day.
And the number then separated by elementary, middle, and high school too, I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be providing it because I know you need that for your budget.
Yeah.
But it helps to separate. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So next, I want to talk about our operating budget, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, we really haven't gotten much information from the state or DSE as to exactly what to expect, other than the fact that they are expecting significant cuts and for us to be prepared and to be very cautious as we're planning our budget, which I think we have done that, and we'll go over that in just a minute. So what we're experiencing now with the closures and stay-at-home order is, is really unprecedented. And what we did do, though, is we, we looked at the two thousand eight recession because that was, had a significant impact on our economy. So we worked with our Budget and Finance Committee, and we looked at the impact on several different revenue sources, and we use that as some guidance when we projected our budget for next year. And so this chart here shows our operating revenue budget in millions. And you see that the total budget is seventy-two point three million dollars. Most of it is local revenue, which is about ninety percent of our budget, and most of that is property taxes. And next year is a non-reassessment year, so we're, we're really not expecting property taxes to be impacted next year. What may happen next year is, is collections may be lower than what we've seen in the past. That could happen, but as far as the amount that we levy next year, that should not change. State funding is six million or eight percent, and that is the formula payment that I'm gonna discuss in just a minute, but it is also funding for early childhood special ed. And then county revenue is one percent, about nine hundred thousand, and then federal is eight hundred thousand, also about one percent. So, you know, very little help from the state and federal government. We rely heavily on local revenue to fund our schools. And so we are expecting cuts in Prop C sales tax. That's a statewide sales tax that is allocated to schools. It's a one percent statewide sales tax. It is included in the local category. That's how DSE requires us to report that information. So we are expecting cuts in Prop C sales tax, and we are expecting cuts in the formula. And I guess one benefit to not receiving a whole lot of state funding is, is that when those funds are cut, the impact on us is, is less than what it might be in some other school districts. And even though our state funding is eight percent, the formula itself is about five percent, and then early childhood special ed is the rest. It's about three percent. And the state is required to fully fund early childhood special ed, so that should not be impacted. So I want to spend a little bit of time discussing the school funding formula because we're expecting some significant changes. In fact, we're, we're no longer gonna be considered a hold harmless school district, and we're gonna be considered a formula district, so I'll explain what that means. But first, I'm gonna quickly kind of go through the, the formula, and please stop me if you have any questions as, as I go along. So it's, it's based on resident enrollment, so only resident, no non-resident students. It does include any employee children that do not reside in the Kirkwood School District. So even though employee children that come to our schools that, that are not residents, the state allows us to count them as resident students. So that, those employee children, non-resident employee children are included in that top line. It's multiplied by the state adequacy target, six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's what the state is supposed to pay next year. That's before cuts, and we'll get to the cuts in just a minute. But you see that those two together is about thirty-five million dollars. In, in St. Louis City and County, and then also in Kansas City, we receive a dollar value modifier. That's a nine point two percent increase in funding because it costs more for, to operate schools in a metropolitan area. And so that total then, line five, is thirty-eight point six million. From there, what gets subtracted is our state rev, our tax revenue from two thousand four, two thousand five. And that's not a typo. It really is from two thousand four, two thousand five, which is thirty-four point three million, gets subtracted. And then line seven is what the state is required to pay us. So that top not line, number one, is based on our enrollment projections next year. So if that number of students come, and also I forgot to mention, it's, it's based on their attendance, and our attendance rate is about ninety-four percent. So it's, that top line is our resident enrollment times ninety-four percent. So we're basically paid for ninety-four percent of our students. So next year, we'll receive, prior to any cuts, it would have been about four point three million if our enrollment projections come in as projected, and if there were no state cuts. And then the per pupil amount is line seven divided by the top line, number one. So the average per pupil that the state is gonna pay us is seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Yes, Team Marie?
Good question. So this is just for the pupils over a certain number, correct?
Yes.
So it's not every student that we're getting this amount for, correct?
Exactly. That's why this average is seven seventy-three.
Okay.
Right, so, so we're really kind of at the, at the borderline of becoming, from becoming a formula district versus a hold harmless district. That number is about four thousand, or five thousand four hundred and twenty students, and we're really right at that right now. Again, a lot depends on the attendance rate, but we're, we're really right at that edge right now. So, so potentially each new student next year, each additional student next year, we would receive about seven thousand dollars for each additional student. And that's that six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars plus this nine point two percent. So this formula came into effect in oh six, oh seven. Prior to that, the, the previous formula, we were receiving five hundred and seventy dollars per student. And there's a hold harmless clause that says if this new formula, which of course isn't new anymore, but if this, this formula was gonna produce less per student than what you received in oh five, oh six, then as a school district, you would be held harmless, and you would continue to receive the same funding that you received in oh five, oh six. And for us, it's five hundred and seventy dollars. So regardless of this calculation up here, if it, if the per pupil amount ever drops below five hundred and seventy dollars, we will continue to receive five hundred and seventy dollars. And so it's, it's just now happening to where that, we're exceeding that. And if you go back to when this formula first started in oh six, oh seven, this top line up here was four thousand twenty-one. So our enrollment has grown by, resident enrollment has grown by fifteen hundred kids since then. And so that's why we're, we're becoming a formula district. This second line has increased too, but the main reason is, is the top line, our resident enrollment has continued to grow. So next year, assuming our enrollment grows, then we will become a formula district. We can, at any time, a school district can go back to being hold harmless. If enrollment drops, or, or even next year, if the state cuts the line number two, that state adequacy target, if there's a significant cut there, then we could go back to being held harmless. Yes?
Does the state, has the state changed that adequacy, adequacy, adequacy target ever?
Yes, it, it's, and when it first started in oh six, oh seven, it was a little over sixty-one hundred dollars. And so it's gradually gone up each and every year.
But do they, have they changed the amount of students we have to have to, to be on the formula?
No, no.
They can't change that, correct?
It's just you go through this calculation based on your students and your attendance rate.
Okay.
And then again, this oh four, oh five tax amount gets subtracted from it, so it's unique to us. But whatever this calculation produces, line, this per pupil funding, if it's more than that hold harmless amount, then that's the amount we're gonna receive. And so again, we're on the borderline, so this, we can switch back and forth at any time if our enrollment drops. And I do want to, I talked a little bit about attendance, but it, intended, the attendance rate becomes more important now for us. This is based on ninety-three point nine percent attendance rate, which is the average that it's been the last few years. But going forward, if, if we were just one percent higher, then that top line would go up by fifty-five students. And when you do the math, fifty-five students times the sixty, the state adequacy target and a dollar value modifier, then we potentially would receive an extra three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars with, with a little bit better attendance. And, you know, in the past, that one percent growth, i- if we were under the hold harmless formula, that would have been about thirty-one thousand. So it's, it's a much more significant impact going forward.
Hey, Mike, I've got a question.
Yep.
Can you hear me? So can you, again, break it down to remedial level for me, please? Can, again, with the, the legislature temporarily making the hold harmless applicable to everybody, are you saying if, if state funding goes down, it doesn't affect us? Is, can you just clarify that for me?
Sure. If the state funding goes, if they drop this number up here, well, either way, the state funding could potentially harm us. Right now, you know, the state just said that they're cutting the formula by three point five percent for this current year, and that cut is gonna be shared by all school districts, including hold harmless school districts. And, and normally, the state's not allowed to do that. They're not allowed to cut funding on hold harmless school districts. But because of the emergency, state emergency declaration, the governor was allowed to waive that. And so, so that's why this year, we're receiving a three point five percent cut in our state funding, which is about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we're gonna, in cuts that we're gonna see. But going forward, the, the governor may not have that ability. And, and I was in a webinar last week where that was discussed, and it's just uncertain how long potentially that he could cut all school districts in, in the state. Now, in two thousand eight, what happened was, because of the economy and the impact it had on state revenues, they had to cut funding. It was significant cuts, and it was for several years. But what they did back then is, is they had discussions with all the superintendents in the state, in the state, mainly, I guess, with hold harmless superintendents, and they agreed to all sharing the cuts. So I don't know if that would happen going forward, but if, potentially what could happen is, is that there's no longer an emergency declaration, then the state would still have to cut funding, and it would just come from formula districts, unless the hold harmless districts would agree to sharing the cuts.
And, and we will always remain hold harmless at that threshold and below, correct?
That's correct.
And that, that, that formula will never be manipulated. Or I guess it could be, but in theory, right now, that's not a threat.
Right, right now, we should, you know, assuming our enrollment goes up, we'll be a formula district. If it doesn't, or if, if the state cuts this, this amount here, line two, and it drops, it drops our average below five seventy, then we would be considered a, a hold harmless district again, and we would receive five hundred and seventy dollars per student. So we should never drop below that. The only way that we would drop below that is if the formula produced a, a per pupil amount at five seventy or below, and if we agreed to sharing cuts statewide.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
I have a question. I can't see everyone. Can I ask you now?
Yep.
Okay, great. My question's about the attendance rate. So I know that, you know, with us, with COVID, and that we went online, they waived that attendance rate for us, and I just wanted to ask you how you feel that might affect things for our budget if we're unable to go, come in person? So then there really isn't an attendance rate, or do you still, you know, what are they doing with the attendance rate? Is my question, I guess.
Yep, well, what they did for this year is we cut it off in March. And so, so they, the attendance rate was up through March. I don't know how, though, what they'll do going forward, but they may require that we do some kind of an average so that they, so that the state pays less. But I do know that for this, this current year that we're in, the state asked us for our attendance up through the point in time when we closed our school. And so I will say that our, our tenant rate was higher this year. And I don't know if, if that's because of things that happen in the spring with kids not coming to school, whether it's, you know, coming back from spring break and coming back late. I know we normally have like a senior skip day and things like that that affects attendance. So I, I don't know if that's the reason, but our attendance did seem to be a little higher this year.
And, and that's good, so it will affect our budget for next year. We're just not sure what it will do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let me move on to the next slide then. So this, I, I want to talk about potentially the cuts, and some of this we already covered. The state really hasn't given us a, an amount on that state adequacy target and the cuts to that yet. They're, they're really waiting for the tax filing deadline in July to really announce anything. They, they've given some projections that, that schools can expect, but nothing definitive. DSE is telling us to use extreme caution when projecting our state funding. And as I had mentioned, they, we've already received a cut of three point five percent for this current year. It was a, a cut for all school districts, including hold harmless. And then for next year, it really depends on whether or not any state cuts are applied to all school districts or just formula districts. So we really don't know at this point. I will say that the, the budget assumes a fifteen percent cut, which is much higher than what some people are expecting. So I, I think either way, we're covered. And, and, you know, we were expecting an increase of one point one million dollars in state funding. So with this fifteen percent cut, that reduces the increase to five hundred thousand for next year. And again, that's, that's really all due to enrollment, projected enrollment growth. So assuming, you know, if, if the cuts are a little bit less, that there's, there's still a little buffer in there, even if maybe our enrollment projections come in a little less than, than what we're projecting. So I think there's enough, I think it's conservative enough for our budget. Prop C's sales tax, again, that's a one percent sales tax. That's a statewide sales tax that is distributed to all school districts in, in the state. It's, it's an equal amount that is distributed to all school districts. We are assuming a twenty percent cut in the funding. Currently, the, the budget for this year was one thousand thirty-six dollars per student. And so our budget for next year assumes eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars per student. So that's potentially a decrease of one million dollars from what we were originally projecting back when we were discussing this with our Budget and Finance Committee a few months ago. I will say, the, the webinar I was on last week with the Missouri Association of School Administrators I will say the the webinar I was on last week with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, some of the people there were estimating that the the cuts might be five to ten percent. So less than, less than what we're assuming in the budget. But again, we we really don't know what may happen during the course of next year. So so I I wanted to be somewhat conservative when when projecting the budget. We will receive CARES Act funding. It's it's not as much as what some school districts will receive. In fact, we're going to receive about eighty seven thousand dollars. The CARES Act funds, that's distributed to school districts based on their Title One allocation. And we don't receive much money from the federal government, and we don't receive much money from Title One funding. So because of that, our CARES Act funding that we're going to receive is is not very much, eighty seven thousand dollars. And that's included in the budget. So over our projected rev operating revenue is seventy two point three million dollars. That's an increase of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Some of the more significant changes, we're expecting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of additional property taxes, current taxes. And that's from next year's a non reassessment year. So that increases from new construction within our district. We're expecting five hundred and ninety four thousand dollars of additional delinquent taxes. And 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 that's a little misleading because the the amount for this year was a reduced amount just because we were expecting that we would. As you know, over the last several years, the State Tax Commission has settled a lot of tax appeal cases. And those corrections and refunds have come out of our delinquent taxes. So the the budget for this year was was less than what we normally would receive. I'm not anticipating that to happen next year. The the appeal cases that have been settled during the course of this year have dropped dramatically. In fact, I think I mentioned this last year, the 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 county and the State Tax Commission is is really done a good job of getting kind of caught up on all the appeal cases. So for that reason, I'm I'm not expecting a lot of property appeal cases next year. And therefore, hopefully, we'll receive what we normally receive in delinquent taxes. Nine hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar decrease in Prop C's sales tax. That's the twenty percent cut. And then finally, our state formula payment, that's an increase. And again, that's that's really just due because we're we're going on to the formula, and it's due to the projected enrollment increases. Okay, I will move on to expenditures, operating expenditure budgets. So this chart shows our our total budget is seventy point seven million dollars. Sixty, roughly sixty one million is used for salaries and benefits. That's about eighty six percent of our operating budget. Six million is for services. That's about nine percent. Three point eight million is for supplies. That's about five percent. And then equipment and other is is two hundred thousand dollars, less than one percent.
I'm sorry, I have a question. When it says on the back, the last one, services, nine percent, what does that include? Like, what type of service?
Well, it includes things like property insurance, bus transportation, some utilities like water and sewer is considered a service. But it also includes services that we provide for students. So it's it's quite a few things.
So like wellness and S T L that those type of services for students?
Yep, it does. And SROs. So there's a number of services that we that come out of or that are categorized in that line.
Okay. And then what about supplies? Is that like office school supply? What what's included in that?
Yep, it's it's mainly school supplies. There is office supplies. There's, you know, a a big part of it is electricity. Electricity and natural gas is considered a supply. Those two alone is is about half of that amount.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. And yeah, please stop me if if I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions. This this chart is just a different way of looking at our operating budget. You'll see that teaching staff, so that's teaching salaries and benefits are about forty three point six million, sixty one percent of the budget. Support staff is twelve point five million or eighteen percent. And then admin staff is four point seven million or seven percent. And then everything else, supplies, services and equipment is about nine point nine percent or nine point nine million, about fourteen percent. And so I think everybody's aware that in in September, the board approved the governance plan with the following governing priorities and SMART goals. And and I I want to mention that SMART goals are funded primarily with existing budgets that that we prioritize to meet the goals. But these budget amounts below, they either include increases or reallocations of funds since the governance plan was originally approved in two thousand eighteen. So these items here are the governing priorities. And then in in the budget document and in our website, you'll see all the different SMART goals. These are budget amounts that have separate line items within our budget for these purposes. But again, it's not all the money that we spend on these different governing priorities. And for example, we have an inclusion budget that's not that that really is for equity, but it's not included in that number. It's a separate department budget. That is sixty four thousand dollars.
What's the total amount of students?
Tom, we have about fifty nine hundred students.
Mike, um, can you also maybe just highlight what is included in the student wellness, growth and success? It being the biggest line item, I just think that would be good to to kind of lay out because I think that's going to be a big topic with everything going on. And I just kind of want to know what is covered in that three hundred and fifty two thousand?
Sure, we we have a an operating budget, a line item for operational type expenses, but it also includes staff members. So we hired, I think it was three social workers. And then, and I think it was one counselor. So those positions were added. And then we we added a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for student wellness to the budget. Now, that amount, we we took half of that and we're going to use it for equity next year. So that's where that sixty eight thousand came from. So in addition to the staff, we're we're planning to use sixty eight thousand for student wellness and sixty eight thousand for equity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
So just, we've got a lot of things going on with Dr. Ulrich coming and COVID and then, you know, reviewing and assessing the governance goals and plan. Do you mind going over? If we did need to make amendments to the budget, how does that work?
Sure, the, well, the budget is amended every month, pretty much every month throughout the year. Normally, it's not an increase to the budget. It's just reallocating money. And and some of that comes from the schools when they need to move money from one line to another or different departments. So so we have amendments each month. What we typically don't have is increases to the budget, but it's certainly possible. At any time, we can make a recommendation to increase the budget and then the board would have to approve it.
Yeah, and I guess just to kind of give you a little bit of where I'm coming from on that. One of our governance goals was with regards to reading and making sure that kids are have the supports to become reading on grade level. And we don't have that check in yet on, you know, where kids, where scores were at the end of the year and what percent. And so I just wonder if that's going to continue to be in our governance plan and if funding needs to be moved to that, how does that kind of, if that's, you know, a priority of the administration and of the board?
Yep, it again, it it can be amended at at any time.
Okay.
Yep.
My last question, I guess it might be kind of what Jean Marie was asking, but within any of this, is student wellness growth and success, does that include the task force, like money towards that?
The task force, you know, it comes, some of it comes from different budgets. For example, the the curriculum budget and even our HR budget. So some of it is coming out of those budgets. But really, this this equity line right here, that's that's really a new budget that we're we created for next year. But we've been paying for the work for the task force out of existing budgets previously.
But it will now come out of the equity for all, is what you're saying?
I would probably, it would still come out. This is additional money that we would, so it would still come out of those existing budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and also about the governance plan. So some of these initiatives are tied to those SMART goals, but we might be changing our SMART goals before September. So with everything with COVID, with we might be online with the things that will change. But I think it's a real positive that you've actually assigned and you've referenced the SMART goals. It's a good start. And then I'm sure we'll have to do a lot of work, you know, towards it and then do some amendments. But this is a, I think it's a positive that you've actually put it in here for the governance plan this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and then looking at the total operating expenditure budget, we're projecting seventy point seven million. That's an increase of about two million dollars or about two point nine two percent increase in the operating budget. The significant changes include one point three million. That's an increase for salaries and benefits for all staff. The average increase was for next year is two point four six percent. We have five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the budget as contingency funds for additional teachers for projected enrollment growth. So we we don't hire those teachers until we actually know that we need we need to fill those positions. So that will that will happen over the summer as as we continue to accept more students. We have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the budget for band uniforms. The that was approved by the board back in either January or February. It takes about six months. And actually, I think it's delayed because of everything that's that's going on. But originally, the the expectation was that those uniforms would be ready in July. And so then they would be paid out of next year's budget. And then finally, seventy four thousand dollars, which is projected increase, two to three percent increase in services, things like buses, property insurance, food service.
Mike, quick, just quick clarification. We talked about the two point four six percent increase. I think you did clarify that's an aggregate of every employee, including whether it's a janitor or a teacher or an administrator, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's that's all the salary packages combined, salaries and benefits for all staff.
Okay, thank you.
And Mike, that five hundred and twenty five thousand contingency, that is that for seven teachers? Is that based on the enrollment projection of a hundred and thirty students?
Correct.
And then so, but that would depend where, what level the students are coming. So we might need to add a teacher at an elementary level, or we might at the high school, depends. But you have seven in there in just in case we need. And then I'm wondering how also just something to consider about online, if if we're online, how that might affect our teacher contingencies. I know you don't know, but it's
We do have a budget for online education. Depending on, you know, how that works, you know, right now, we're providing the online instruction with our own teachers. You know, if we were to ever, you know, use a different tool and that we had to pay for, then, you know, that budget would be affected. But as of now, you know, we're planning to, you know, depending on what happens in the fall and and next year, if there will be online learning, it will be provided by our teachers. And I know that we've been working with Dr. Painter. There there might be some additional things that we have to purchase to provide the online learning. But most of the pieces that we need and the tools that we need are already in place to to be able to provide online education. Okay. So this shows the per pupil spending throughout St. Louis County. You know, as you know, Kirkwood is a top performing district in the the state and St. Louis County. You see that our spending per pupil is is below the county average. We, and and this is from the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. We don't have nineteen twenty yet because we're still in in the current fiscal year. But we spent just under twelve thousand dollars per student. County average is twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars per student. And you see a a lot of our neighboring districts spend more than us. So so we're pretty efficient with our dollars. Okay, next I want to talk about our operating fund balance. Just a few disclaimers. You know, these assumptions, we we have to look at these each and every year because things can train change dramatically. Probably the the biggest change is staffing levels. And again, it's based on enrollment and our class size guidelines, but also salary and benefit packages. So these have a a major impact on our, you know, enrollment staff. Those are what impact our budget the most. And so just keep that in mind as we look at this graph. I started with two thousand sixteen seventeen because that's when Prop K passed. It passed in April two thousand seventeen. And a- as you know, we we must have a fund balance that's equal to twenty five percent of our expenditure budget. And the reason for that is because since we rely so heavily on property taxes and we have to wait for the property taxes until December, we have to have at least twenty five percent of the expenditure budget in our bank account to start our fiscal year off in July so that we can pay staff and utilities, buses, all those operating type expenses while we wait until December for our tax dollars to come in. So we must have at least twenty five percent in our fund balance. And you see in sixteen seventeen, we were below that. You know, our promise with Prop K was that we would keep our annual operating expense increase below three percent so that we could extend Prop K for at least five years. We will do that. And of course, we will get further than ten years likely, or further than five years, likely ten years out through two thousand twenty seven, twenty eight. Now, we do drop low twenty five percent in that year, but it's it it's close to twenty five percent. And I think if if some of the numbers come in better, that will will end up being okay through twenty seven, twenty eight. Last thing I want to mention is that, you know, the school's been closed for you know, a couple of months during the the end of the year. And so there is savings related to the closure. The expenditure savings, we think the net will be about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we're going to lose some revenue mainly from food service, from our food service operation. But our expenditure savings will probably be about one point one million. But the net, after you you reduce it for the revenue that we're going to lose, the net should be about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, those additional funds are included in in these projections here. One thing I do want to mention is is we had to stop all of our deliveries with the closure. And we just now started accepting deliveries again. And so a lot of deliveries that were all And so a lot of deliveries that were already ordered were sent back, had to be sent back. Um, we still need those, our schools were still counting on that. And um, really to kind of replenish some of their supplies. Uh, and not only schools, but like custodial and maintenance supplies. Um, so what I would like to do is is in July, once we know kind of what, we're we're accepting orders now. And once we know what didn't actually get delivered by the June thirtieth and that can't be paid out this fiscal year, I would like to come back to the board in in July and recommend increasing the budget for some of those supply type purchases that were sent back. And we won't know that until the earliest would be July and maybe not until until August before we have that ready. But I would like to use some of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings uh next year to to really give back to the schools.
Mike, can I, oh, sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, and so i- if we're realizing this net savings from the buildings being closed and not knowing what's going to happen in the fall. And if we have additional needs for our students for online learning or new curriculum to help them or something, we can use some of that savings to address missed needs because of COVID, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We could, we we just have to have a discussion and then the board would have to approve amending the budget.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And so along with that question, Mike, I I kind of wanted to ask about, I know that buildings each have their budget. And I just kind of wanted maybe an update or an understanding of how those building budgets are managed. And are those building budgets tied to um the governance goals that the district has?
Well, they're they're really managed by the principals and and their team. Um, and, you know, they get a per pupil amount that that we get to the schools. Now those, as you recall, we went through with the failure Prop A and then passing Prop K. So we went through a period where we cut those budgets significantly. Um, we restored some of those cuts, but not fully. Um, but it's really managed by the uh the schools. And yes, they are supposed to align their spending with our um our SMART goals.
Uh, in that, um, that net savings, Mike, does that include the CARES Act funds, the eighty seven thousand, or that's separate?
That's separate.
It's more s- more savings.
Right, and and really what we're planning on using those funds for is cleaning and sanitizing supplies and equipment and PPE. We've, we've already started buying some of that stuff. And so we we may spend some of those, some of that money now. And then, and then um, we likely would not be reimbursed from the state until July or or maybe as late as August.
Right, so when the plan comes out in the middle of July, you'll have a better idea what you need at that point for cleaning supplies.
But we've been buying, you know, there's certain things that we know we need. And for example, we bought those backpack type sprayers to disinfect schools or classrooms. So we we bought some of those, we bought thermometers, we bought masks, we bought um hand sanitizer. Uh, but there certainly could be a a lot of other things and and that is something that's really going to be ongoing.
I would just um add that, just please be mindful in this that, you know, as kids have been out of school now for five months, that the gap is only widening. And so if we need to put funds to h- help lessen the gap, then maybe that we need to look at that.
Yep.
I agree.
Okay, next I want to move on to all the non-operating funds. So these are, we have seven funds. Um, and six of them besides operating. So these are the six other funds that we have. These are all either dedicated or restricted funds that are meant for a specific purpose. And these four funds here, debt service, maintenance, technology, Prop I, these are all funded with property taxes. So they all have their own uh property tax levy. And we'll go in in greater detail on on these, but this is just a summary of the revenue, expense and and fund balance. And um, just like the the revenue has to be used for a specific purpose, so does the fund balance. So the the, any remaining fund balance has to be used for the purpose of the fund. So first I want to talk about our our debt service fund. And this chart here shows our outstanding debt. This is from our two thousand ten bond issue. You see that the total amount that we owe i- in principle is about eight point seven million, nine hundred and fifty five thousand in interest, and so a total of nine point six million dollars that we owe. What I would like to do and what I'm going to talk about in just a minute is prepaying some of this debt, some of this existing debt, prepaying this year, this um one point eight million dollars. So prepaying that early this summer. So first I want to show the projections as if we weren't prepaying the debt. Um, this column is two thousand nineteen, twenty. You see the, our debt service tax rate is thirty six point four cents. So that's our current debt service levy. Um, what we expect to end this fiscal year in in the debt service fund is a a fund balance of um roughly four point nine million dollars. Next year, when we set the tax levy in September, the tax rate will drop to seventeen cents. You see the revenue. This is what we owe for next year, roughly five million dollars in debt. And then we would end with about three million dollar, a three million, million dollar fund balance. So this assumes we're not prepaying any debt. You'll notice right here, this line defeesence, so last summer we defeesed two point three million. So we paid off two point three million dollars early. We did that last July, so it was in the two thousand nineteen twenty fiscal year. And so that's what I am recommending to the board, and I'll show you those projections in just a minute. But I'm recommending that we, this summer, that we pay off one point eight million dollars in uh existing debt. So as you go out the next year in twenty one, twenty two, the tax levy would drop to nine cents. We would end with about a two million dollar fund balance. And that two million dollars, you'll notice that the debt that we owe the following year, right here, one point nine million, that reserve covers the debt in twenty two, twenty three. And because of that, our debt service levy would go to zero. So it goes away and completely in twenty two, twenty three. Okay, so next I want to show what happens if we prepaid debt. Um, nineteen, twenty is the same, same information, thirty six cents. We end with four point eight million in our reserves. If we prepay that that final year of debt, that one point eight million dollars, it's shown right here. We do that. Our projected tax levy, when we set it in September, would be twenty eight cents. So it would be twenty eight cents, it would generate this amount of uh current taxes and revenue. We would end with about three million dollars in our reserve. And then you'll see that that is enough to pay the next year's debt. And because of that, the rate would go to zero.
Mike, is the um the payment of the debt, the one point eight, is that a one-time payment or is that going to be paid over the twelve months or the ten months?
It would just be a a one-time payment.
Okay.
And so I'll go back to that.
That's money we're currently paying over three percent interest on?
Right, this is the rate that we're currently paying on that debt now. Um, we can't, we can't um pay off those bonds early. The way it works is we have to pay it to trustee. Uh, we pay it to trustee, which is a another bank that holds it on our behalf. And then they pay the, they would hold that money and pay it to the bondholders in uh, February of two thousand twenty three. It's the same, this number here, at two point three million, prior to us doing that, this number here was was about four point seven million. So the the reason why we we can't, the bonds aren't callable and also um, we're receiving a federal subsidy on this money. So the federal government, these were Build America bonds in two thousand ten. And and the the federal subsidy pays thirty five percent of the interest cost. And so we don't, we don't want to lose that subsidy. So that's another reason why, and we worked with Bond Council last summer when when we arranged the the prepayment last summer. Um, but that's why we want to pay it to trustee. We'll still receive that that subsidy payment um on on all of the existing bonds, um, which will help with the interest cost. Okay.
So if we pay it off, the bond I mean goes away sooner, correct?
Right, what would happen is if we do nothing, um, the debt stays out there that year, this eight, one point eight million stays out there in twenty two, twenty three. It affects the tax levy. It drops to seventeen cents next year and then to nine cents. If we pay it off early, you know, you no longer see it here as an expense. The debt service tax levy is is higher next year, but then goes away completely the following year. So I mean, this gives us more options, you know, I I don't know, as I mentioned earlier, we we need to relook at our facility needs, reengage our community, um, determine what our next steps are. But having a higher debt service levy gives us some more options.
Mike, when are we needing to decide this?
Well, I think, you know, we need to, we probably need to take our time, make sure, you know, that our our community is is fully engaged and and supportive before we put anything on the ballot. Um, but the timing wise, you know, our 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 next opportunity would be November, of course. We would have to make a decision in August, though. We we have to draft ballot language, have it approved by the board and submit it to the county by the end of August. Um, so that's the timeline, timeline to have something on on the November ballot. Um, if we do something in April, then it's the end of January.
So, uh, Mike, as far as paying these bonds off early, that's a recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee. I believe you you had said that they recommended last year and then they're recommending again.
Well, they haven't recommended, we have a meeting tomorrow. So I wanted to present this to the board first. Um, but tomorrow we will be disc- having the same discussion. I will be asking them to recommend it. Um, and so you'll know more as soon as I hear uh after tomorrow, whether or not the Budget and Finance Committee is recommending it. But that's the plan is to present this tomorrow, um, ask for them to recommend it, and we'll see if if they do that or not.
And I guess that was my question, Mike, when will this come back to us?
Well, I should know more tomorrow.
Okay, and then we, but you would bring it back to us when we approve the budget?
Right, so I, what what I would likely do is is send something to Dr. Common, and she's on the Budget and Finance Committee, and and we have a couple of board members that are on. Um, but I would send something to Dr. Common just to let the board know that it's been approved or will be recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And then the same budget information would come back to the board on June twenty second for approval. But you would know in advance that that it's a recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee. Assuming they recommend it. Okay, I guess if there's no more questions, I'll I'll move on. I think we've pretty much covered all of this. Um, same information, that's the revenue expenditures, ending fund balance for debt service. It's used to pay the two thousand ten bonds. Uh, this number, this expenditure number, which you just saw, uh, includes the prepayment of one point eight million of the existing debt. Our maintenance fund also has a dedicated tax levy. It generates about two point seven million dollars each year. And we use that to maintain and improve our buildings and grounds. Some of the the main work that we're planning this summer, which is pretty typical each and every summer. Um, but we're planning to replace some HVAC units and controls. We have some new roofs, windows, doors, asphalt, concrete, sewer repairs, um, lighting, flooring, all those things, um, even playground resurfacing. So um, that information is is in the budget documented as well, a a more detailed listing of what those items are and how much they're going to cost. This ending fund balance, two million dollars again, has to be used for the maintenance fund. And just like these next ones I'm going to show you, um, just like our operating fund, these tax dollars don't come in until December. So when we're paying for any work that's happening in our buildings from July through December, it comes out of that reserve until our tax dollars come in. Technology fund will, uh, the tax levy will generate um about the same, two point seven million dollars. This is a little higher because of E-rate funding. We're expecting uh a hundred and ten thousand dollars in E-rate funding. So that's why this is a little higher than the maintenance fund. Um, but this fund has to be used to purchase technology, supplies and equipment and for technology support. So we do pay for some of our technology staff out of this fund. Um, the budget does include uh district-wide replacement of our Wi-Fi access points. In the spring, uh, you may recall that the board approved a, this project. It is partially funded through E-rate funds. E-rate will pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars of the project, and it's estimated it costs three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Last summer, we did a a larger project. You may recall, we we replaced all of our network switches throughout the district. Um, and we used E-rate funding for that as well. So this summer, we're looking at replacing our access points. But again, that's already been approved by the board. The ending fund balance is about one point five million dollars. And again, this is restricted for the technology fund.
And Mike, when are our uh devices, the leases up on our devices? What year are we in?
Yes, uh, we just made our last payment, so the nineteen twenty fiscal year included the final year. It was the third year, the third payment on that lease. So the lease is up, we we've fully paid it off. Our plan is to continue to use those devices, hopefully for two more years. So that was the the original plan when we entered into the lease that um, and and we we received all those devices, I think it was in January, either December of two thousand seventeen or January of two thousand eighteen. Um, so we're about two and a half years, we've been using them for So we're about two and a half years. We've been using them for about two and a half years. And, and our goal was to use them for two more years and then potentially enter into a new lease and, and refresh all of our devices.
Right. So, so that's a good news. We, we won't have that expenditure at least for the next year.
Yep. Hopefully for the next two years. And, and what, what will happen is we'll start to build up this fund balance. And that was always the plan is, is to use some of the fund balance and then to build it back up. Okay. Next, I want to talk about our Prop I fund. And this is our outstanding debt in our Prop I fund. Prop I is, debt service was general obligation bonds. So it's a different type of bond from these. These are leasehold revenue bonds. And this was a, a tax increase back in two thousand five to make improvements throughout our district. And some of the, the main improvements back then was a new gym at the high school and the new science building at the high school. So those were the, the two main improvements that we made back in two thousand five. But we refinanced those bonds in two thousand thirteen, and that saved us quite a bit of interest, around two and a half million dollars in interest. And then we issued new bonds in two thousand fourteen to do additional work. But this is all the outstanding debt that we have on those leasehold revenue bonds that are paid from Prop I, the Prop I fund. They'll be fully paid off in five years and twenty four, twenty five. And so that tax levy, similar to maintenance and technology, they all have the same tax rate amount. They all generate about two point seven million dollars. And then in this case, that, those funds are used to pay the principal and interest on the two thousand thirteen and fourteen leasehold revenue bonds. This fund balance is also restricted. It's used, just like the other funds, we have to have some money in the fund balance to be able to pay for any expenses prior to December when tax dollars come in. And the expense here is, we have an, every August, we have an interest payment due on these bonds. So we, and it's, it's round. At the end of next fiscal year, we'll need about a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in this fund balance to pay that interest payment in August. Okay. And then the last two funds that we have are our Activity Accounts Fund and our KCC Fund. These are not supported with property taxes. The, the Activity Accounts Fund is, is mainly donations. It's also fees that we collect from parents. It includes some rental activity revenue and a few other things, but it's, it's, there's no tax dollars in here. It's also restricted for the purpose of those revenue funds. And then the KCC Fund, that's all tuition that parents pay. There's some additional funds in there. We, we do receive a, a small amount of federal funding for the meals that we serve at KCC. But for the most part, it's, it's all tuition payments that we receive from parents. So our Activity Accounts Revenue and Expenditures, we, we usually set these equal to each other because the, the revenue that we collect is allowed to, all of it is allowed to be used. So whatever we project in revenue, we project in expenditures. Again, it's used to record any donations, fundraising activities, rental activity, activity fees, this is anything paid by parents, soda commissions, and, and there's, there's a few other things as well. And this is pretty typical amount that we collect each year in Activity Accounts. It does include our pool rental revenue and also the interest earnings that we receive on the Pool Endowment Fund, which, as you know, uses, we use that, those funds to pay for the operating costs of the pool. And then our last fund is the KCC Center Fund. These funds, the revenue that we collect, again, it's all tuition. It, it's, it's used for the Early Childhood Center, which is our preschool program. Adventure Club, which is the before and after school program, and then Summer Adventure Club. And it, it also includes a portion of the Parents Teachers Program. So these are all self-funded. And again, they receive most of their revenue from tuition, assuming that everything is as normal next year and, and we're operating, which, you know, it's yet to be determined. But we're expecting four million in revenue and about three point six million in expenditures. And then the ending fund balance next year is projected to be one point seven million dollars.
Mike, this is Jennifer. A quick question on this. My understanding is that KCC parents were not paying for early childhood the last couple of months of the year. Can you tell us how that impacted their fund balance or how much revenues they lost in the last couple of months?
Yes. Fortunately, we did have a, a reserve that was about one point, it was roughly about one point eight million. But we, we lost about five hundred thousand dollars. And so that dropped to what we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year to be around one point four, one point five million. And then we'll, we'll build it up some next year. But all that depends on, on, you know, if we're fully, if we're completely operating as normal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, my last slide here is, is just all the different funds together, all the revenue expenditure, ending fund balances. And so we, we talked about each of these. In, in total, our revenues that we're expecting is just over ninety two million dollars. Compared to the current year budget, it's actually a decrease in revenue of about four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. But really, the main reason for that decrease is, is from our debt service fund. Because our, our tax levy is going to drop in the debt service fund. And so the amount of revenue that we're expecting to receive is going to drop by about one point three million in, in just the debt service fund alone. So that's part of the reason why you see this decrease. Expenditures, we're projecting ninety one point three million. That's an increase of nine hundred and thirty three thousand or one percent. And, and this would have been higher too. As mentioned earlier, the Technology Fund in nineteen twenty included our final lease payment, which was about one point three million. So this number up here is about one point three million dollars less than what it was the previous year. And so that, that's changing this bottom line. And then looking at our ending fund balance, again, all these have a specific purpose and are restricted. And our total ending fund balances for next year is projected to be forty point seven million. That's an increase of about five hundred and sixty four thousand or one point four percent.
I have a question, Mike. Didn't see, are we, do we pay any service providers within the district? Like to write services for students or are they all like the BJC's and things like that? Do they use their own funds to come into the school?
No. Yes, we do, we do pay a number of services. There's instructional services, there's support services. So we, we pay for a number of services throughout the district. And there's also, you know, we pay technical services. Each department may have a, a particular type of service that they have to pay for.
Okay. When I speak of, I'm more so like student centered, like, say, like Alive Well or, I don't know, Lutheran Family Children's Services. Do we have any of those types of?
A little bit of that, Mike. I know that we are able to participate in the Children's Services Fund, which is provided by St. Louis County. And so we are able to utilize a lot of service providers through that fund at no cost to the district. But we do also, in addition to that, pay additional service providers.
Thank you. And, Mike, just a general question. So this budget would be a projection for if we are in school next year. And then we won't know exactly what we're doing, but I guess we'll have to have some scenarios once we figure it out. If we're online for a portion of the year or if, what happens. So I'm just, just in general, this, this is a very fine presentation, and I, I like your predictions and your projections. But is there thoughts to providing that to us as well?
Yes, I think as we get a little closer to the start of school and, and as we know more, you know, then we'll know the impact of what it may have on our budget if, if it's all online or partially online. I know that, you know, some of the savings that, that we saw during the closure, you know, we, we had utility savings. We weren't paying for any substitute teachers. We didn't, you know, we weren't making the supply purchases. So there's a number of things that, that we won't be paying for if, if we're either fully online or partially online.
Well, that's good. So you can estimate those like professional development there. So there's different categories, the transportation, things that might change. I thank, thank you very.
Mike, could I add something here? That if we do move to a model of instruction that includes some instruction in the buildings, we have to be very cognizant of the fact that if we still only have, say, ten persons in each room, we're going to have to be very creative about how we utilize our staff. And so, you know, obviously, like you said, Angie, that's a little hard to predict right now. And, and definitely, things will probably be, have to be adjusted budget wise as those things become a little bit more clear and may fluctuate throughout the year depending on the community spread of COVID.
Yep. Yes, I would think that if, if we're even partially open, then our expenses aren't going to go down. They're, they're probably going to be higher. So as I mentioned, tomorrow, we have a Budget and Finance Committee meeting. The, I'm gonna, most of it's going to be updates. But I will be discussing prepaying debt and getting their feedback that I'll share with the board. And then depending on what that is, then, then the final budget will be presented on June twenty second. The board has to adopt the budget prior to June thirtieth. So please, in, in the meantime, if, if you have any other concerns or if you think there's anything else that needs to be changed, please let me know so that we can prepare those changes to the budget.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, this was great. Thank you so much for explaining everything so carefully.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It really helped me. I, I'm like lost. So thank you.
What a first meeting.
Right. I'm over here crunching numbers like, oh, my goodness.
Because before we wrap up or move on to the next thing, I'd like to just make sure we, I, I think we'd be remiss if we missed, if we didn't mention a couple of things. First, let's thank the Prop S Committee for all their hard work, dedication, effort. Not only the committee, but the community. Thank you so much for, for the support that we did receive. And we're going to listen to our community. We're going to partner with them. We're going to work with them. We have an enrollment growth. We, we can agree on that. And we're going to continue to work with our community to see how we can make, you know, make things better for our students because we know we, they have needs and we have to work with them. Also, I'd like to mention Saturday's Peace Walk, which was organized by, it, it's called the K-Talk Peace Walk. But I know particularly Roberta McWoods, Shonda Amber Phillips, and Ramona Miller organize it. I'm so, I get emotional even thinking about it. It was such an amazing turnout, thousands of people. Not only Kirkwood residents, but residents all over the city came in support. And to see the number of people show up and, and represent, it was just amazing to be a part of. So thank you guys so much. Thank you. Again, Roberta McWoods, Shonda Amber Phillips, Ramona Miller for, for organizing. The K-Talk organization is, is really amazing. And we need to make sure we continue to support them in every way we can. Thank you, guys.
If I might add, we have a board workshop next Monday at five PM. And we'll be addressing some of the policies that we still were outstanding from either the MSBA updates or Policy INB, the Teaching on of Controversial Topics. So we'll continue that conversation next week at five o'clock. And I'll make sure and get everybody another fresh copy of those policies and we'll get that agenda posted as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
All right. Mr. Romaine, Dr. Condon, are we, are we done anymore? Work session items?
I think we're good to go. That's all I had tonight. I just thank everybody for being here. Congratulations to our new officers. And a congratulation to our electees on the board. We'll see you again next week.
Thank you. All right. Everybody have a great evening.
Thanks, everyone.